A good base of where we are, what projects we are doing, what projects are still on the list. And then as we move into next Tuesday's meeting, you know, that's when the chairs will kind of talk about what's, what's new projects are on the, uh, on the agenda for 2021. And then the third meeting will be if we, if we need to have that two years ago, we did have to have that because we had like seven projects going last year. We didn't need it because we were trying to slow down and catch up. So we'll just see if we really need the third meeting, uh, towards the end of August.
Okay.
Zach, did you say next Tuesday? Cause I have next Thursday.
It may be next Thursday. I don't remember. Uh, I know we have a regular meeting on Wednesday, so it wasn't bad.
I have it on the 13th. Tell me if I'm wrong. I'll change it.
I have it on the 13th also.
Okay, maybe I wrote it down. I had it on the 11th.
Yeah, I have it on the 15th too.
Okay. Well, then it's probably the 13th. Does that sound right, Pat?
Yep, the 13th is it.
Okay.
Is it same time?
Yep.
Before we get going, um, I need to open up for public comments. Uh, do we have any other comments, Pat?
They could raise their hand. Yep. We have one from Brett Miller. I'm going to lower her hand and unmute her.
And Carl will be back. He had to go find a better location for signal.
Brett. Okay, great. Hi, everyone. Thanks. Um, hopefully you got the email that I sent out earlier. Um, in thinking about the hats grant that you submitted last week. Thank you again. Uh, I thought maybe it might be helpful if I just condensed the camp hall to a capital corridor safety study just for the camp hill portion of it. And then break it down, um, over the next couple of years that the grant is available, um, to possibly, and hopefully I should say, uh, continue with the safety improvements along the bypass. So hopefully that's helpful. And, um, if you have questions, of course, uh, please ask me. Um, and thanks again for all that you do.
Yep. Thanks, Brett. We, we did get your email.
Great. So I've got Brett muted. I've got Jennifer Hoover. I'm going to lower her hand and unmute her. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Thank you. I'm just curious for tonight. I didn't see an agenda or any attached materials. So for this meeting and ongoing for future meetings, and I know this was a point of discussion last year. Um, can we please utilize the zoom feature fully and either share our screen or make?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna share the screen, Jennifer. We just haven't gotten.
There is not, there's no specific agenda and Pat's going to share his screen.
But so I assume for the purpose of tonight, we're looking at the, um, page 13 perhaps of the budget that's available on the website.
Yeah. What will be shown on the screen will be an updated version of that with, um, so, and you'll see in a minute color coded, um, explanations of where we are with the current capital projects. Uh, the next meeting next week, um, I'll, I'll be dispersing something extremely similar. So.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Everybody else?
Carl's there.
And so before, before Pat walks us through this sheet, you know, one thing that we have to keep in mind this year, and probably next year is, you know, that we haven't talked about before, you know, we typically run a balanced budget here, right? At the borough and it's all worked great. You know, this year with COVID and, you know, kind of other higher than estimated expenses. And probably next year too. I mean, most communities and schools and cities are assuming that COVID is going to linger into next year. You know, we're going to need to use some reserve funds to balance the budget headed into the, you know, into the end of the year and likely in the next year. So we're going to get more detail about that in October. Pat's doing some projections. But I think he has some estimates tonight to just tell us how much, you know, of our reserve we're going to need without any new projects. How much of our reserve we're going to need just to kind of finish out calendar year 2020. So I mean, that's important when we're considering, you know, what projects may be coming for the next meeting when we talk about that. Um, so I just want to make that point. So Pat, do you want to tell us about that and then start us off on the?
Yeah. So essentially I've run, I've, I've been running reports and we're about, uh, 50 to 55% through the year, um, from an accounting standpoint in the office. So the, the July reconciliations, um, are, uh, are in the process of being done. So the numbers that I've been working off and calculating off of are essentially end of June 30. Um, and where we are and the biggest hit that we've had, uh, from a revenue perspective is the lack of camp fees and revenue that we've created from camp fees. So we are essentially about from Seabird Park Day Camp Theater Camp, et cetera, about $210,000, um, as a net zero. Because we haven't, we collected money and then refunded it. Audrey has done a couple of camps. We've made a couple of thousand dollars, but we're not, we're not going to nearly make that revenue because we've, we've canceled camps. Um, one of the issues that we'll have to talk about with the school district moving forward relative to that is there are school districts that are allowing, uh, parks and recreation departments such as Mechanicsburg to utilize their school buildings for programming. Camp Hill has chosen not to do that at this time. So we're kind of stuck at a loss of space for programming. So that is something that we're going to have to work through a political, um, situation, whether that's the council getting involved or us, as staff working in conjunction with council and the school board on what we're going to do for recreation next year. Because if we don't have the places to put people, we can't do it. So that's going to be one of the major discussions as we move forward this budget process. But, um, from an expense standpoint, we, we haven't paid the $75,000 for instructors, um, or the $28,000 in camp counselors. So that's about a hundred thousand dollars, um, give or take a couple of thousand in, uh, expenses that we haven't paid. But from a revenue perspective, we're still going to be in the hole about a hundred thousand dollars for recreation. The pool in itself, the pool, um, is not busy. Um, we talked about that most likely being a subsidy. We generated, um, about $50,000 in pool pass sales. We usually do about 140. So limiting it to the borough, which has been nice, um, from an exposure standpoint, you know, we've had a lot of people get passes. But unfortunately the revenue is just not there, but we didn't, we went into this kind of knowing that. So from a revenue standpoint, um, we're, we're, we just are going to be about 70 to 80,000 in the hole from the pool. That's, that's probably the largest, uh, loss we'll have relative to that. Um, any of the enterprise funds from the revenue standpoint from general fund, um, our largest revenue generators are property taxes and, um, earned income tax. Based upon the June, end of June reconciliations into July, uh, we are roughly 55 to 60% of what we would get from EIT. So our EIT hasn't slowed down during this period of time. So which is good. The, the, our property taxes have come in, we're about 94% collected. So by the end of the year, I would imagine we'd be 95 to 96 collected. So we haven't had any sort of complete major loss relative to that. Now.
What's our, well, Pat, what's our normal collection rate on property taxes? Is it?
97 to 98%.
Okay.
Um, we try to, I try to be conservative with that number. Um, and we usually do generate between 98 and 99% of collected rate. The, the other thing, um, what's that? Let's return to thoughts. Sorry, Zach. Um, EIT, property taxes. I mean, that's essentially, um, the big ones. Um, realty transfer is a little slow, um, but their houses are for sale and that is moving. I would imagine that picks up. For those who don't know, we get realty transfer tax from the sales of property. The county kicks us money after the sales of property. Our cable franchise is coming in right where it should be. Local services tax is pretty much where it should be in the 55% collected rate. Moving forward, as we get into the O and M side of the budget, um, we are going to be looking at probably a 10 to 20, or 10 to 12% um, estimate of reduced earned income tax from COVID in 2021. Um, so we are doing some, some pre-modeling of, um, those losses. And we are going to try to put together an O and M budget for council that is indicative of those, uh, of that transition. So where does that impact us in terms of general fund, um, deficit spending? Last year, we chose to use reserves to transfer to the stormwater fund to, uh, increase, increase the reserves for that funding, get it started. We are on pace to that. We actually just printed bills for the stormwater on Monday. Um, both the transfers from sewer and, uh, general will be made for that account. Uh, the biggest issue that we're having, as Zach referenced, in terms of the capital improvement plan is council will have to look at balancing a budget dependent upon that reduction in earned income tax. And slight reduction in property taxes based upon, do we either pull from reserves to balance the budget? Um, council wanted to continue to provide a subsidy to, uh, the stormwater authority for the next couple of years. And kind of juxtapose that to the 1.2 million dollars that we allocate in the borough's general fund towards capital improvements. That number is not set in stone. It is not reserved, but obviously if you reduce that cash denomination towards the capital improvement fund, it lowers the, um, it lowers the cash flow for larger projects to be paid for out of the CIP. So the bigger decisions that we're going to have as we get into, um, the next meeting, the meeting after that, and then the O and M meetings is setting the overall priority of council of if you want to set that 1.2 million dollars as the benchmark and the top priority within the budget modeling, then we're going to have to find other ways to either reduce spending or pull from debt or pull from reserves to balance the budget. That's the long-winded 10,000 square foot view of where we are.
And, and Pat, what's the, what would be a, the number that we will not hold you to, but what would be the ballpark guess for, you know, the, the deficit given this? Is it, is it 200 grand? Is it 500 grand?
Modeling, the modeling that I've done. So I did a five-year model based upon where we are 2021 to 2024. That number, that the number that I'm getting as I play with it is probably, um, anywhere between 250 and 475,000 in deficit out of the, out of the general fund.
For 20, for budget year 2020.
21, 22, 23, and 24. Correct.
Oh, each, what you're saying in total or each year you're assuming that?
What was that?
Let me pull up the.
And, and I mean, while Pat's looking that up, I mean, you know, Camp Hill is lucky, you know, from future or past councils that Carl and Lee and Rich and other people were on. I mean, we're extremely well positioned to weather this storm and many storms into future years. So we just still have to decide responsibly the best way to do that and preserve the ability for future councils to do that too. Who knows what's going to follow COVID, you know? We have no idea.
Okay. So what I have, what I have right now for 2021, 22, and 23, in the modeling that I did is ranges from 290,000 in year 2021, 439 in 2022, and 332 and 332 and 586 as the third year. So about a quarter of a million dollars up to 450 without making any substantial cuts, just based upon the, the forecasted revenue inflation of, um, cost. Um, some initial, um, like replacement of a police officer, some basic things that have had, we've had discussions on in the, in the past. Have been put in, have been put into that modeling.
And so we'll, we'll, we'll get into the details of that later, but so the number for this year is about 250, 300, it sounds like.
The number that I have for this year is about 290,000 and that, that continues with the 100 and 1.2 million dollar transfer to capital improvements from the general fund. But does not have a transfer to the stormwater budget because of the stormwater budget billing, um, and starting that revenue stream there.
So, so there's no, there's no longer any transfer from the general fund to the stormwater fund, assuming that 300.
Modeling that I've done so far, no.
Okay. So.
How much was supposed to be transferred?
Yeah. So, so that's, you know, I would tack 300 then on to that because I think we need to have that.
Well, the number, yeah, the numbers that we had in the initial stormwater budget, there were, there was a subsidy ranging from 100,000 to 350,000. So I didn't feel comfortable allocating that total number in the budget at that time, but I can update this modeling for future discussions based upon that 350 number.
Okay. So, so that would mean that the number for 2020, you know, is about 600,000 plus or minus, you know, subject to change. Assume that we're spending 600,000, somewhere around there to balance the budget out of reserves or making cuts of 600,000 just to kind of get through the year.
Or, or reducing the, the transfer to capital reserve by that amount. Correct.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. So that's the baseline. So then Pat, do you want to walk us through? Can we start on the, the, the capital budget YTD tab to kind of show everybody where we left off last year, what projects are happening, what are still, you know?
I can absolutely do that. Give me one second to.
What's, what's the title of that report?
I'm going to pull it up on the screen for you right now.
Got it.
Got it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Um, so this is, we started this when I got here about four and a half years ago, relative to outlining.
Pat, sorry to interrupt, but for the people in the audience viewing this, can you, um, make it a little bit smaller, maybe at 75% so they can see it? Go under view and, um, yeah.
Is that better?
No. I think you went the other direction.
You mean the other way? So you can see the whole page?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hold on. Is that better?
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's a slider at the bottom. You can.
Yep, yep. I'm good.
Bottom right.
Okay. So when we started this, it, there were a lot of projects that were, um, discussed within the committees, discussed with council. And then the projects, um, you know, when you work for seven people, sometimes them get in, some get, don't, don't get in. And Sam and I were kind of at a loss of making sure and wanting to make sure that everybody on council was aware of the projects and the big picture of what they were looking at. Um, so we put this together and we've been using it each year to kind of outline for council where the five-year projects are, what they are. And then in terms of the, the estimate of the five-year cost for those particular projects, some of which are one-time capital expenses, some of which are, require reserved cash to be carried forward towards those projects over a five-year period. So for example, um, council, uh, requested us to do some modeling a couple of years ago relative to paving. And we came up with a number that if we wanted to keep up with paving over a 20-year period, we needed to allocate $600,000 a year, plus 75,000 in ramps with those projects. So you'll see within the sheet where it says estimated cost five-year balance. The, the street or the, uh, the paving is at 3 million, which is 600,000 times five. So that's where that number comes from. We're not paving $300 million and, or 300, $3 million in 2021. So this sheet here breaks it out to the location of, of the, um, the, the project. So like admin, police, public works, planning and parks and recreation. The other tabs, because we have the stormwater authority now are for stormwater and the other tab is sewer. Um, I'd like to continue to use that viewpoint, um, because I think we're going to have to do some more aggressive, um, sewer capital modeling as part of this budget. The, the borough had a very healthy reserve with sewer fund, um, but we have spent money on pump stations. And we do have a lot of I and I that we've been putting some money into, to ensure that, that, that's like capital cost for pumps, excuse me, for pipes, uh, has become more of an O and M cost, um, which has an impact on the overall bottom line within the sewer fund and the reserves within that fund. But for the purpose of this sheet, um, I've broken it out.
If I can interrupt. So I'm in this. Sorry to interrupt. So, uh, the sewer items, and we have the separate sewer fund, which is the, the revenue source there is the fees. So are, are you saying we need to consider that as we look at capital improvement overall as opposed to looking at the fee structure?
I'm saying that if we're looking at spending, which when we get to that tab, 450 to 500,000 dollars a year in I and I work for pipes. The sustainability over the 10-year period for the sewer fund, your reserves will be depleted in a very rapid fashion. The revenue is not offsetting the amount of capital expense that what we're doing at this period of time.
Carl, I don't know if you remember last budget year, you know, we went in detail through the, the 10-year, it was a 10-year sewer projection just on the sewer fund. And it was showing that we're basically using, we're going to be using sewer reserves to fund, you know, operating costs. And that disappears about year nine, I think it was nine or 10. So we'd spend, we'd. Yeah. If we leave everything the way it is now and we spend 500,000 a year.
First, I have to apologize. I'm, I'm.
Carl needs his IT department.
Oh, I'm, I'm in between two houses and, uh, long story on internet. So I apologize. I, I'm missing some things and you may not be able to hear me either. So, okay, we'll get back to that. I mean, my question was really, you know, how much do we look at this in terms of sewer, sewer fees versus capital, capital fund?
You're, you're, the way we've done, the way we've done work relative to sewer is that the rates offset the O and M. And then we've had additional capital line items that we, we pulled from reserve. Reserves is almost a, uh, a cash forward balance from reserve to the O and M budget. I'm saying that if we continue that type of modeling, which we can do, it just is going to deplete the sewer fund reserves over a, over a nine to 10-year period, which means at some point during the next nine to 10 years, council needs to look at a rate adjustment. If, if, if the goal is to do as much I and I work as we continue to do, which I think based upon the sanitary sewer system. And I think Sam would concur with that, that since we pay Hampton Township to treat our sludge and we have an agreement with them. If we get dinged with surcharges, that's a million dollars per surcharge. Spending, spending $3 million over five years to ensure that we don't get fined five times is, is money well spent. So that's, that's the long-term goal with that. But we, I, we can definitely go into a much deeper discussion on that, uh, when we get into the, the actual budgets and stuff.
Yeah, I, I get that we'll, we'll run out. The question is, uh, do we address that through fees?
The answer would be yes. The budget.
Okay.
So, um, this is the list of the projects. Um, I've removed the projects that have been completed. These, I've added a project timeline, grants sorts, if there's grant source of funding and the deadline for those particular grants. Um, without getting into too many of them in the specifics, um, there are ones that, um, we, we are currently doing, um, such as the streetscape plan. We have a DCD grant for that. I've outlined that it's the grants received. The project timeline is in design. That $1 million that there is the current balance of that project based upon estimates from Simone Collins minus the $800,000 grant that we received for that. So the, right now there's about a million dollars of construction left to do on that, on that particular project. That doesn't have an, a tied reserved grant cash, um, associated with it. Um, but these essentially are the list of projects, um, that have been discussed in years past, up to the outlined, um, and kind of giving council the, you know, where we are in terms of these projects as of right now.
Okay.
So Pat, if, I'm just trying to understand the five-year balance. So is that five-year projected into the future or is it five years from a certain date?
Five years going into 2021. So this is a 21 through 25, uh, excuse me, 21 through 26 capital improvement plan. So that's $3 million for paving. That's the easiest one to use an example of is 500,000, $600,000 allocated from 21 to 26.
Okay.
Okay. Got it. Thanks for going over that again.
But not all of these are over five years. I mean, some of these projects would be done.
Correct. Some of them are one-time capital expenses. Some of them are, are multiple year reserved cash allowances. So like the, the, uh, in the recreation tab, the kayak boat, the kayak boat launch, um, we received a $28,000 grant from that. Uh, the Lion Foundation is giving us $5,000 for sign of education, but the outstanding balance on that project is $25,000. So if council were to move forward with putting the kayak boat launch in the actual CIP for next year, that would be a one-time $25,000 expense for that.
Okay.
So these numbers, I'm sorry, are, are, are what is due or we will spend minus any grants?
This is what you will spend minus any grants.
Um, remind me, I know we talked about this land acquisition of Dairy Field. I thought that was turned down. I thought that that was not something that was available.
Yeah. Bonnie asked me that this morning as well. So I, 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 we met with the, the farmers bureau in 2016 and 17. Uh, Sam and I met with them and we had a really difficult time getting an appraisal on the property because it's a multi-zoning issue. And so the farmers bureau at that time said to us, well, you know, you have to tell us what the value of the property is and we don't know if we even sell it to you. Um, and there really hasn't been any push to purchase that. Um, but when I remove it each year, it comes back up and gets put back in. So I just kept it this year instead of removing it.
Okay. All right. Well, technically, yeah. Which is that, I mean, that's a big chunk.
It's a very large chunk. Um, I think the overall thought process on it is, is that, um, you know, the borough does lack, like any borough does, green space for future, parks and recreation areas. And so, you know, I, I don't foresee that. I mean, we're talking about this in the zoning at Hockman right now. I don't know what the market is for that particular piece of property at this time. Um, but I don't, I've never heard anybody in the four and a half years I've been here really interested in purchasing that other than the exploratory analysis that we did.
Okay.
I have to tell you, I would be very interested in purchasing it just because it is heavily used by young children for soccer. And, uh, you've got residential homes backed up right to it. So I think it's developed, you know, the field's gone and.
Yeah, Bonnie, I think, I think that would be a great win for the borough if we ever figured that out. I think that's kind of why it stayed on there is just, we haven't, I mean, because some of these are just placeholders. They're not approved projects. I mean, some are approved and some aren't. So I think that one's just stayed on there for at least my two years because.
Yeah.
It's not really active at all.
Right.
If council's interested in really pursuing that, you know, we have a lot of other, the, the streetscape is a large proportion of this outline. The, there are grants available through DCD, DCNR for land acquisition, um, for the creation of parks. That, that would be the way that I would advise council if that is a reality in the next five years that we look at doing a DCNR grant for that, um, for the land acquisition. And then, you know, I, they probably wouldn't fund it if there wasn't a long-term, uh, you know, redo, redoing the fields, making it more of a legitimate park area. So I think it's a larger project than the initial $400,000. That, that would just be the estimate of the land acquisition.
Okay.
To Bonnie's concern about, uh, not having development there, uh, which I share, isn't that part of the, the look that we're doing at our zoning and, and uh, rezoning and, and paying attention to the bypass, the length of the bypass, you know, all those areas that, that are sort of attractive to developers for commercial development. I, I thought we were, um, trying to, to take action on that to make sure that, um, the zoning is consistent with the, the desires of, of the greater community.
Yeah. Well, Rich isn't here to speak to that, but yeah, we were having discussion of that last night at the steering meeting. So, um, nothing's been finalized, but you know, the, the issue is that that property is combined with the, um, you know, the, uh, farm bureau. So you can't label one, one thing. And I don't think you can label part of their property, something else. So that's a little bit of an issue. I don't know. Maybe Pat can speak to that, but.
Complex zoning issue down there with multiple use, with the different types of zoning districts coming together to get an actual assessment of that property. With Bonnie, Bonnie's exactly right. Talking, we're talking at the zoning at Hockman about how to zone that particular area with this, where Mr. Sandman is, where the church is. And the farmers bureau with a zoning designation that would allow for, um, some sort of commercial development, uh, but nothing that would be quote unquote, air quotes intensive, um, hotels, um, restaurants, things of that nature. They are working on that, Carl, to your question.
So, so to kind of stay on task, so then the thought.
Thank you.
Pat and I had was.
You know, I hope we get to that soon.
Next week, you know, for example, public safety, we had talked about, you know, making prior, uh, a priority crosswalks. So, you know, the, maybe next week is when we talk about putting a new line item in where we're going to designate making it up, but 25 grand every year for crosswalks or something like that. Right, Pat? So that's kind of.
Yeah. The, the goal with that, so to give you an example of how easy that would be relative to the, have here. If you look at the, the north part of the sheet where it talks about GF, SSAB, CASAF Bay, those are all different state aid, grant aid, federal aid, whatever. Um, we have, we used about $60,000 out of liquid fuel, which is state aid for crosswalks this year. We could put, put that in this, this, this CIP and denote, denote that it would be coming out of state aid. So the public as well as council know that that's where the funding source is coming from.
So, so why don't we, can you flip to the next tab? So this would be once we talk about, you know, what are the new projects and do we want to do them, you know, this will be where it flows into. So Pat, if you want to go through this one.
I just scroll. Sorry. So this, this breaks out, um, essentially, um, on a more in-depth, and this will be completely updated as we move. This will be completely updated as we move through this. I don't want people to get too focused on this. Right now, because there will be updates, but what this does is it takes two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty four. Next, next week's sheet, as we work through it, it would be twenty one to twenty five. What it does is it outlines the revenue sources, such as interest from the Capital Improvement Fund, grant reimbursements, bonds, loans. As the different different cash forward balances transfer from the general fund. And sale of commodities of equipment. So those are your main revenue line items as it pertains to the C I P. Then I've broken out specifically in what council will do traditionally in their second meeting and third meeting. Well, they will go down through these list of projects. And what I've done is I've taken a red, the red paint. Know the projects that have been expended and are no longer going to be on the table moving forward. And will be removed. The ones that have the red line towards just one year. Are showing that we are in the midst of a five year cycle on that project and we have completed that first year cycle. So the police station, the lease of the the license plate reader, life saving equipment. All of those receive the red, the red denotation to show that they've been allocated. But I've left the remaining ones open in the pre the following years. So council can see that those are. Reserved cash capital products, projects that are going to require additional compensation moving forward because they're tied to either some sort of debt, short term debt or lease agreement. For example, with when you get down to the public works area, we haven't paid for the the street, the borough streets yet. We're paving right now. We're not finished with it yet, but I would obviously mark that as we get done with that. The compost site improvements, we're almost there finalizing everything with that. The Eisenhower Walkway, the Nineteenth Street. And Nineteenth Street Pork Chop, both of those things, the Eisenhower Walkway. That money is going to be used towards the hat match that we just applied for for that large scale for projects on that grant application. And then the pork chop just went through final discussion and should be on the council's agenda to go out to bid in short order. So that project will hopefully be done by the end of the year.
And then so at the very bottom of this sheet, if you scroll down to the bottom of two thousand and twenty. It shows you what, you know, what the balance in the fund is. So after we do all the projects that are highlighted and read and all that, you know, it shows there's going to be what $2.9 million. In the Capital Improvement Fund. The, I'm sorry, $1.8 million in the Capital Improvement Fund. See that at the bottom? So then I think it's, so the next year is the big one. So in the next year, we have the Market Streetscape Plan in there, you know, which we did get grant money for. But if you look, that's a $1.7 million line item now. So then when you scroll down to the bottom, you can see that the $1.8 million that we have at the end of this year turns into 900,000, 980,000. You know, if we go forward with that and and complete it all. So that's kind of the, you know, that's like the number you got to pay attention to as we pick through which projects we're doing and how we're paying for them.
The goal would be, so this sheet's been updated to outline, we did not get. The M T F funding through Penda. That carried a 30% match. That 30% match was tied to a million dollar grant, so it was 300,000. That 300,000 was removed from the expense side because we didn't get it. But also the million dollars for the actual grant was removed from the revenue side as that was an estimate and a projection. Now, that being said, the D C E D and C F A are coming around around again. September thirtieth with another round of grant funding for. Projects like this. So the goal is going to be to organize a grant application and apply for D C E D again. It's been two years since we got the D C E D grant. So I think that we have a shot at it. We may not get it, but it's worth trying to get the majority of that project cost funded by grant dollars. So this sheet will be updated with that as we move through it towards the budget.
And so the 800,000 that we did get from the C F A. Whatever, a year or two ago, you know, that's listed up there at the top under the grant reimbursement. So we have that available. You know, for the Market Streetscape project now, and that's included in the balances. Does that make sense to everybody? How the numbers work?
Yeah, in other words, if we didn't have the grant funds coming in, our fund balance at the end of the year would be closer to 100 grand or so versus the million.
Right. Yep. And so Pat, can can you just, because since the Market Streetscape is the big one, can you refresh my memory and maybe everybody else's on? Like where we are with designs and all that and like is the $1.7 million that we have listed there, is that still just a ballpark guess? Or are we getting closer to really?
That's a pretty, so we, when we initially got the estimate from Simone Collins, it was about $2.1 million. We cut out the extension of the streetscape at the C B R committee down to Seventeenth Street through Twenty Fifth Street. When that, when that was removed, that got the number down to about $1.7 million. We told D C E D we would put $100,000 towards the project as collateral. So that's why that $100,000 sits there as match. So we have $1.8 million essentially outlined for that particular project. Gibson Thomas, who is the the engineer that was selected to do this work. They are, Tim Bolden and Joe Nardella are currently doing the design work for that particular project. And then actually, Sam and I are meeting with them tomorrow morning at ten. Hopefully, we get that done towards the end of the year. We're on a pretty aggressive time schedule that they've outlined for us. I'm comfortable with that number, but ultimately, when it goes out to bid, we will see if the numbers are completely good or. Come in lower, but we just, the the estimates that we have are are pretty good.
So so design should hopefully be done in the late fall.
Correct.
Means we can get bids out. What, early in two thousand and twenty one?
Yep.
That's the plan.
But that's getting all the permitting done and everything else like that. So we could be looking at the end of two thousand and twenty one into twenty two with this particular stuff. This is going to take a while to get through Penda and things like that, so.
And and just so everybody's clear, there will be review by council and the public on the on the. Propose the different iterations of the the plan developed by Gibson Thomas.
Yep. So I have a question again. Sorry, who was?
Go ahead, Bonnie.
I have a question again. So you had listed that the grant match that we have to pay is 100,000. And then the Market Streets, Streetscape is 1.7 million. Is that all grant money?
No, that's the only grant money is what I'm showing in the revenue line item. It says grant.
Which is eight hundred thousand.
Correct. So right now, we're about a million dollars of unfunded project cost.
Okay, all right. We do, though, we do have an opportunity to reapply for the C F A grant next year.
Correct.
Yeah.
The bottom of the screen, can I scroll or no? Totals, there we go. At the bottom.
Yep, I'm working on it. I'm sorry.
Thanks. I was just curious. And Lee, you mentioned that we have the opportunity to reapply. Is that for additional funding or?
Yes.
And what is?
For the Streetscape.
Is it usually a 50% match or?
Go ahead, Erin. Sorry, go ahead, finish.
That was all.
It depends. The the last time D C E D opened this pool of funding, there was no match, which is why we were very aggressive politically. Behind the scenes, above the scenes, whatever. So that $800,000 was essentially free money with the borough putting in $100,000 saying, yeah. We're committed to this project. Traditionally, C F A money is 50%. So that we have a C F A grant out right now through a different pool through the C F A for the the. Pumping Station Project at Creek Road. That's a 50% match. So traditionally, it is 50%.
And just to let me know, what is the objective of the Streetscape? Is it just to kind of beautify and? Make everything. Uniform or not really?
Traditionally are done to create a sense of community in a downtown, in a downtown marketplace in small towns. So they're done to create core nodes of pedestrian focus, business focus. There they are, they are a way to generate interest in creating. Essentially a downtown. I mean, it it that's.
Also to attract and retain businesses too.
Yep.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's, you know, it's supposed to help us bring in new businesses and, you know.
Yep, and it's to like identify the area.
Right.
Correct.
Because you know, when you, when you drive through, you know, kind of, I'll call them other cute towns when you think of their downtown, you can tell right away when you get to the. The area where you're supposed to park your car and get out and eat lunch and shop.
Okay.
When we met with D C E D about this initial grant proposal, the person who reviewed our application said. They liked our project because it's the thought process within D C D, D C and R, whatever, that Camp Hill is a connection between Harrisburg and LeMoyne. It's one road.
So during COVID and quarantine, I saw a lot of information. Emerging about downtown districts or small town Main Street, Main Street Grants and Main Street Funding. I'm just curious if any of that has to do with this or if this is just because it's development.
This, that, that, those pools of funding wouldn't be utilized towards this particular construction project. Mary Beth has been in in working with the downtown group to look at those grant applications for their own businesses as well as. You know, funding for other events and things like that, but it wouldn't apply to this particular.
Okay, so that was more for businesses specifically and not development of?
Not not construction dollars, no.
Okay.
And and Pat, what, you know, you can't really answer this question, but try to. I mean, what is the likelihood that we're really going to get, that we're really going to get? Another grant, especially from the same pot of money that we just got 800,000 from. Because we don't want to just, if we're going to do this, at some point, we need to probably do it.
Well.
Just going to wait for grant money forever.
You have a three year turnaround on the grant that we got. So we're we're into crunch time with that particular process. Percentage wise of getting it, the way I would would draft the grant. And when I would meet with D C E D would be to say that we are attempting the second grant would complete the project. That it, we've allocated funds for it. We've done all the design work. We're completed. Here's the final plan. There's a multitude of ways to spin it. I would say, I mean, this is going to be a 50 50. You know, erring on the side of maybe 40% that we would get it, but it's still worthwhile to apply for the grant money. Because if you don't, there's a 0% chance that you're going to get it and.
I agree with that. And if we, and if we are to get it, are we going to get 800,000 again or are we going to get some smaller denomination of?
We applied, we applied for the full grant last time and we received 800,000, which was essentially about 40% of what we asked for. So if we applied for the remaining balance, a million dollars on the grant outlined what that million dollars would be for. Will we get a million dollars? Probably not, but could we get half a million? Yeah. And then we we were responsible for 250. So we've got $500,000 in grant, 250 in match plus the 800,000. Now we're at, we're at 1.4 million, 1.5 million of the project with 350, 350,000 of cash as opposed to a million in. That's the way my mind works at it. So.
Last question, can those grants reimburse yourself or does that lower the likelihood of getting it? So for example, if we just said, okay, let's do it all now. Can we apply for the grant, still get it and then reimburse the C I P fund?
You. Good question. So these grants are 100% reimbursable. So we have to spend $800,000 before we get the 800,000. So what, so what would happen for this money is there's a, there's a simple form that you actually fill out. It's actually unbelievably simple. You take the form, you send $800,000 worth of invoices and paid invoices to the C F A. The C F A reviews them and they write you a check for 100,000 back. That's the way it works.
But I mean, for applying for for future grants, would it, if we said we're going to budget a million dollars and we're going to start this project on January first. And complete it, you know, next year.
Yeah, I see your question now.
Can we apply next fall, get money and then reimburse ourselves or does it not work like that?
We would, we would basically just keep reimbursing ourselves and spending money out of that pool of cash. Until we got to the balance of the total grant funding that we would have. So the answer to that is yes. We would do that in terms of, we'd spend $800,000. If we got another 500,000, we continue to pay invoices. Pay half a million dollars from that initial 800 that we would get back and then reimburse it again. We can't make money off the grant process, but we can definitely use the cash flow to subsidize. And then submit for different invoices for the second grant.
Okay, so if we wanted to, we could say, let's start the project now. Get everything moving and we'll still apply for grant this year and next year.
Absolutely.
Even though, even though the projects could be done by next year, we could still potentially get a grant that would reimburse. Some portion of the project.
Absolutely. It's a fully reimbursable grant. Correct.
You don't have to wait until we get the grant money because some grants you have to wait until you get it before you do anything.
No, in fact, I would think the opposite would be true. I think that if we're construction shovel ready and spending money, I think it would be an incentive for them to subsidize it.
I have a question and I'm sure you probably already covered this, but the 1 million. That we're putting towards the Streetscape, are, do we already have that reserved and earmarked for this?
No, I mean, this is a fluid document, so there's not to say that that's in a separate account with a million dollars in it. So it's reserved cash in this model only.
Okay.
I call it, it's like a placeholder, Erin, is how I'm thinking about it. It's not really, it's, yeah, it's in there, so we continue to talk about it.
Okay.
So I have a question unrelated, but it's regarding your explanation of the red lines. The license plate reader. Why does it have 9262 every year for five years?
I just didn't carry.
And this, this year was 2200.
That was the initial down payment on the piece of equipment and then that's the operational cost moving forward for those years. So that's the down payment on the license plate reader out of pocket. And then there's a $9,000 fee associated with that each year related to that.
So if the red lines don't have a number in those following years, it means we're done paying for them.
Yes, you'll see there's a zero within those red lines. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's kind of like paving, Bonnie. Like that one is one where we pay on it every year. Some of these are just one time versus other ones are ongoing.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understood.
It's a, it's a, it's a good question, Bonnie. It's, it's just, I I wanted to try to find a way of showing that. Some of these things are somewhat already paid for and that there's additional expenses that. If you say, as we go through the budget process, man, we as council members need to find 50 grand. Let's cut the license plate reader and the body cameras and the in car cameras. I'm going to say to you, that's, that's reserved cash moving forward. We've only paid year one of that.
I see. Okay.
I hope I'm not interrupting since I, my audio is lousy. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a question that sort of relates to Erin's question earlier, I think. And I think I know the answer, but on the first sheet we were looking at. It lists a number of projects and the five year cost. It includes some things that are not on the sheet we're looking at now. For example, Public Works Garage Improvements. And is it correct, Pat, that the reason for that is? The sheet we were looking at before was kind of some projects that we're looking at might do. Whereas this one is more, the one we're looking at right now is more things that we're committed to. At least more strongly than than some of the other things.
The initial spreadsheet we looked at is conceptual. This one is the practical one. This is the one that we're working off of that council has said these are projects that we are interested in doing. And we allocate them accordingly into almost the operational capital side of kind of things. So yes, your, your, your assumption, analysis and interpretation of that is correct.
And that's, that's kind of why we thought we'd do this 30,000 foot overview of all this again. So so next week, we'll move projects, if we have them, from that other tab onto this tab. The ones that we want to do to kind of, you know, get them in there and get them on the radar screen.
So question, okay, just to clarify for myself, some of these projects, let's see. On our shared screen, we've been talking about these for, since last year. We have not done them and. It's August, so they might get kicked into 2021. So these are. These are monies allocated on paper only, not in the bank to these projects.
Correct.
Balancing the budget like.
These are, these are allocations that are, that are reserved for those particular projects. They will be assigned within the Capital Improvement Project to be withdrawn down upon in the our accounting processes. In the, our accounting processes, um, when we pay those, when you collect, when you approve those invoices and payments for. Shaper Beverly, you're, we're paying it out of this particular fund.
Okay, so. Uh, for instance, the Little League field has not been done yet and there are sixty thousand allocated to that in twenty twenty.
Correct.
If for some reason, because I think we are moving forward on that for the fall, but if for some reason the fall doesn't happen. Is that a sixty thousand dollar savings from this year then to move to the next year?
Council wanted, if council wanted to carry it forward, we would just carry it forward to two thousand twenty one or any other future year that you guys would want to do that project.
And then Aaron, real quick, so I heard you say before, when we were talking about balancing the budget.
Yeah.
You gotta remember that there's like two, think of them as like, there's two different buckets. You know, this is just the capital improvement fund. When we talk about balancing the budget, that's like the first thirteen pages of the, of the budget that's posted online. That's the operational budget.
Right.
And that's where Pat was, when Pat was talking about like missing revenues and expenses and all that, that's kind of like all an operational budget. So if we save sixty grand on the Little League field or the Eisenhower walkway or whatever. That doesn't really help the operating part of a budget.
So these are like the reserve funds that we are spending on capital projects.
Yeah, it's kind of a way to think about it. Yeah.
Yep.
But they're definitely like two separate funds.
It's your. The, the general, the general fund is the checking account. The capital fund is your savings account. And it's just, you were to spend money out of your savings account, but for specific things each year, like. Vacation to Guatemala, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
You know, this year, and then next year I'm gonna do something else. You're just saying, putting it out of your savings, knowing. You're gonna pay it, but you also have the income of the grants and then the cash forward balances.
Okay, thank you.
And your example, Aaron, like street market streetscape, two years ago, that was under the twenty twenty line and then, you know, now it's moved to twenty twenty one and, and so on.
That was contingent upon getting the grant and doing all of that stuff, and then it gets accelerated through that process. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Great questions.
So what will our process be for, um, getting some more information on some of these things because. I think most of us are reasonably familiar with most of these projects. Um, we've talked about them tonight, but the one I mentioned, the, the garage improvements, for example, I don't know anything about that and. At some point would need to understand a little bit more what that is.
Yeah, we had, that's been on there for a couple of years, but there's some additional M S four things that we can add to that. I think that the goal would be to. Um, go over the projects that are on that list next week. Add things such as crosswalks or whatever, um, into that, go over it on a, on a line way, what they are. Um, what they would be and, and allow counsel to then prioritize from their standpoint, what they feel. Should be allocated into this spreadsheet here in the five, five year snapshot. So we can do all of that next week, Carl.
All right. Thank you, Todd.
I, I envision next week being the longer meeting.
I would agree.
Where we're gonna go through all these and talk about them again.
Right.
So what other thoughts or questions do we have about this? So then the other two tabs are, there's stormwater, which is on there, which. You know, kind of that's, that's now like a separate entity. So I'm not sure we're gonna spend too much time on that one. And then there's sewer projects. I don't know, Pat, do you want to hit on sewer real quick?
Where are we at with the sewer projects?
Okay, so we have, we have a sewer fund, which is a separate fund that we don't co-mingle with our general fund and. Out of that, pay, we pay, um, you know, employees, we pay chemicals, materials, basically everything to treat. The sludge that goes through the pipes. So. With that infrastructure comes allocations for, um. Making sure the pipes work, making sure the pump stations work, et cetera. So. Over the last three years, we've replaced all of the pump stations, um, except for Creek and Park. Um, last year we came up with the concept through H R G. Of removing the park station, which is not only aesthetically unpleasing, sitting adjacent to the pool, but. Um, finding through some, some flow metering and things like that, that really it's not necessarily necessary. Um, so we, what we did is, and I can go down these briefly, um. They are upgrades to the creek pump station and abandoning the park station. Um, council approved us applying for the grant through the C F A. Uh, for that project, the project cost was about one point eight million dollars. It's a fifty percent match. So that project, if we get the grant. Will be about nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, sewer rehabilitation is an I N I means replacing and fixing pipes. Um, that have cracks in them. It allows for groundwater, stormwater, other things to get into it. When it gets into it, we don't have our own, our own sewer treatment plant. It goes to Hampton. We have an agreement with them that we're only allowed to get to a certain level of treatable sludge. When that treatable sludge is, as reaches an excess, um, we get surcharge, which means they fine us. Um, so. We have been putting about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. The last two years prior to that, we were putting about two hundred to two fifty in the system. Um, we did get a surcharge fine in two thousand and eighteen from Hampton. I'm gonna go into the specifics of that because it's nonsense and we're fighting it right now, but nonetheless. Um, they asked us to continue to keep on the I N I process that we were on, which was that. About three fifty to four fifty number. Um, so. That's when I have the five year cost at two point five million. That's half a million a year. Over five years, that helps us keep up with infrastructure, just like paving, same kind of model as paving. What do we need to do to? Keep our sanitary sewer system and the pipes, uh, functional and not falling apart and not having I N I problems.
And, and when you, when you go look at our sewer part of the budget. Right, there's, there's a line item in there for ongoing for five hundred thousand.
Uh, I can.
Four fifty or something. And, and when we were doing those ten year projections, more we're talking about earlier. We assumed that every year going forward for the next ten years that we were gonna have something four fifty or five hundred thousand of I N I.
Correct.
Single year going forward, which doesn't need to necessarily be that, but that's what we had to plug in for.
Can you see, can you see my screen right now that says wastewater budget?
No.
Okay, one second.
Have we heard back on the grant or when do we expect to hear back on the grant for the park station?
Hopefully, hopefully by the fall.
Okay.
Really banged up these, these, um.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. COVID.
I know, right? Essentially what I was just gonna show you and then I'm, I'm having a problem with my, my computer right now, getting back to the. Share screen feature. Um.
If you look, it's on page nine of the budget and at the bottom it's under capital outlay and it's called collection system improvements. But so that's, that's where that line item sits and we're assuming that's going forward for a little while anyway.
Okay, here we go. There we go. Right about that, there you go. Um, there's the wastewater budget calendar year, and then what Zach is referencing is. See where it says collection system improvements? That's what, that's what we're talking about in terms of I N I work. So. Back to this, um. The televis- televising, cleaning, sanitary sewer mains, that's televising means putting cameras down and seeing where the issues. Um, are with certain pipes, flow metering is, um. Literally using flow meters to figure out where I N I is coming into the pipes. Um, we have a hundred thousand dollars a year, um, in leases, um, that are as a rolling part of our vehicle improvement plan. Um, we, we lease equipment, um, over a period of time. To save on the large capital expenses of buying like a backer truck, which was a quarter of a million dollars. Or a, um, uh, another large, like a, like a skid loader, which is four hundred thousand dollars. We leased that equipment. We put together a, a vehicle replacement plan, um, that. Hundred thousand dollars gets us new equipment and rotates that, that our equipment. So we don't have antiquated and dated equipment. That's what the leases are for. The sub pump program and inspections, we have a lot of people that put. Um, are, are dumping things into the, the sanitary sewer system that they shouldn't be through sub pumps. Um, a vacuum tank agent is a piece of equipment that goes on the, one of the sewer trucks. And then the twenty fourth street pump station fencing is exactly what it says it is. It's fencing around the pump station. Those are the capital things that we're looking at.
That's five years.
That's over a five year period. Correct. The.
Yeah, so the big one here that we've kind of already put in motion is that pump station stuff.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, any other thoughts, questions? So I think the, the point next week is, you know, we'll go through the list of projects that are already on that tab. And then we'll, we'll talk about any new projects that have come up in the committees that are being recommended. And then we will kind of get that all down on the, the five year plan, what we're gonna do and what we're gonna wait on. And if we figure all that out in a reasonable time, then we will not have like number three, but if not, we'll have three reserved. In case we need.
If, if you're a committee chair and you've got a project you want. Think about how you're gonna sell that next week.
Yep.
Hint, hint.
Anything else, Pat?
Is that it? Zach, or do you have more?
No, no, I mean, that's, no, I'm good. I have, I have a, I think we've laid out everything that, that's there. Um. Obviously, um, you know, some of these things, when you see like sewer rehabilitation. You know, it is laborious to list all of the places that have the broken pipes. So we, we do bid that out and we fix them as they go along. Um, but, you know, we try to, I, I wanna try to keep us on just like the paving track, you know, that we have these expenses that we know we have. And we can get into a future discussion like we talked about with Carl earlier about. You know, we had a very large reserve for a reason. We upgraded your pump stations that were fifty years old. Um, or the pump stations that were fifty years old and the system is old. So just like the roads deteriorate, the infrastructure deteriorates. And I think. You know, with the stormwater billing going out. That's functional. The authority is gonna meet at the end of the month to work through those project, projects. I think everything's moving the way it needs to move. Just, and if it's, it's very helpful. Um, if you could just let me know if you have project ideas. You know, we can help you formulate costs or thought processes. Just contact us. In the office so we can talk prior to that, because that really helps when we get into the meeting. So it's not like. Hey, Pat or Sam, what about X Y Z and X Y Z? And then we're like, well, shoot, we don't know. And then we have to come back for a third meeting. So anything you guys have. We're here to help as much as we can.
What, and Pat, the, the one other thing that you reminded me of is, you know, next week, if we're gonna talk about. Crosswalks or, you know, for example, paving. We're not picking which streets we're paving or painting crosswalks on. We're just deciding that we're putting.
Correct.
Fifty, fifty grand in the, you know, in the plane and we'll, we'll figure that out.
Correct.
As we move forward.
Right. That's exactly right.
Okay.
And this was probably already said, and I just missed it, but, uh, e- each committee should get to Pat and, and the rest of council. Things that the committee wants to add to this list, correct?
Correct.
I did.
Referently ahead of the meeting.
Yeah, so. Uh, so to that point, Carl, um, we did receive the information from Brett Miller about. The capital to corridor study. I talked to Louisa from the bike friendly group. Um, they want to re. Re-discuss their priorities from last year. Um, you can see in the, the first sheet. Um, I put under bike friendly, half a million dollars. That was a hundred thousand dollars a year. For five years, because that was the number that council kind of talked about last year as a way to continue to improve these things. Uh, but ultimately, count, that's council's call, but I will provide. That priority list to council again. I talked to Louisa today, so I will provide that to council again. Prior to that meeting and then anything else we'd want to talk about, we'll try to get it organized and. Do this through Zoom and share the screen and I'll play with it and we can do whatever.
Okay. All right.
Sounds good.
Um, okay, so we have a second time of public comments. Pat, anyone with their hands raised?
Yeah, Sherry, and then Jennifer Hoover has one.
Okay.
I'm lowering her hand.
Yeah, hi guys. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Hey, I just wanted to thank you. Very well organized. It's really just like. Thank you. Look forward to next week to talk about new projects. So. Um, I guess have a great week and hope to hear you all next week.
Thanks, Sherry.
Jennifer Hoover, I'm gonna lower her hand.
Sorry, could you hear me or was I still muted?
You were still muted.
I would say thank you for sharing the screen and providing the information to follow along. I think I have two questions. Um, first, just, I, I wasn't able to add it up. But with the C I P budget, um, and the stormwater budget. Are, are those available fund balances or just the, the sum total of what is being? Set aside or prioritized? For those projects?
That, that is not, that is not the fund balance. Those are the, in the stormwater and sewer, that is the. Requested estimate capital allocations from that particular fund. That is not the fund balance.
Okay, so, okay, I guess I'm just curious or. Kind of, and I'm just kind of listening to what Aaron said about, you know, we're setting aside sixty thousand dollars for. The Little League field, we're sitting, we're setting aside five hundred thousand dollars for bike friendly. So I guess my question is, are we encumbering like too much or too few dollars? And how do? How does our fund balance with regards to the C I P and others compare? To other boroughs, I guess, or what's the best practice for how much our fund balance should be?
So there's a, there's a lot of communities that don't even have C I Ps. Uh, I think we're, we're intellectually and financially advanced compared to. A lot of smaller towns, um, as it pertains to our budget process. Um, the industry standard for reserve cash reserve balance is fifteen percent of general operating cost. So our fund balance and our general fund is well above fifteen percent. Capital improvement is a little bit different because there really isn't other than the one point two million dollars. Um, that's set aside for the cash balance transfer. There isn't a revenue source directed to there. So to have a reserve fund balance related to capital. Would be a moving target and difficult, but the industry standard that I, that I've always operated with, which is in the industry standard. That's taught within any sort of municipal budgeting practice is fifteen percent of general operating cost.
But, but we're, I, I don't mean, we don't need to go back and forth if it's inappropriate, but so we're well above the fifteen percent.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so, so part of the reason, so we have a double A two credit rating. And, and when we did those refinancings at the end of last year and, you know, we saved one point nine million. You know, part of the, part of why we have such a good credit rating is solely based on the fact that we have strong, what they say, strong reserves. Um, you know, so that's why when we talk through this stuff, it's nice if we can maintain those, but still.
But is it fair to say we would equally, still equally have a strong credit rating if we were to reserve just the fifteen percent and were to appropriately allocate? Less than the fifteen percent. And I, again, I'm just trying to make sure that we're using the money effectively. And not setting aside money unnecessarily that is never ever used, right? So that we're. Using the money from.
Yeah, no, so we, we wouldn't have nearly as high credit rating if we were at fifteen percent. And, you know, the reason we have this money set aside is for rainy day and, and it's pouring right now.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I, I get that from government relations and state budget perspective. I get that. Um, a, a final comment, I guess going into next week and thinking about prioritizing projects. I didn't try and participate in these budget discussions last year. I don't remember or recall the conversation about the dairy field. Um, so that was kind of new to me. And so again, we're spending nearly four hundred thousand dollars on the dairy field and maybe another five hundred thousand on the bike friendly again for a second or more year. But meanwhile, there's been conversations about trying to purchase a hundred and thirty thousand dollar lot that's been said. To have been too expensive to pursue. Um, so I guess just going into next week and trying to prioritize projects that we continue to try and put our. Money where our mouth is and that we, um. I tor- prioritize the health, um, safety of our students and pedestrians, just as much as we are prioritizing putting up. We finding signs. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think that's it.
Yes, ma'am.
And because it's a committee meeting, we don't need Aaron's adjourning purposes.
Well, shoot.
But you can, if you'd like to.
Um, move to adjourn.
All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Next Thursday.